103, we're ready to start. Everybody looks at me like, what am I supposed to say next? So it's now on your lap.
You did a very good job of the interview.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. We are tickled to be here live and in person. We appreciate being able to join you guys online via Zoom or however we did that several times, but we're tickled to be here today. And we've got some work that we really need your help with. And I'm looking at Dr. Evans and he's giving me the nod, so I'm like, okay, we're good. And so we are, today we're gonna, we're gonna touch a little bit on the vision and mission, and we really help, we appreciate you helping us with that. And as we work, as we continue our work with the strategic plan, there'll be pieces that we share with you, and then we'll bring back, we'll talk about a little more, and then we'll go do some work, and we'll bring back. You know, that cadence is really what you can expect from us as we continue to work in this direction. Today, our topic is core values. And this is the core, the meat and potatoes. And, you know, there's electrical currents in the air helping us with all of that. And so we do appreciate the opportunity to be here, and we appreciate your help as we move forward. So, so as I said, we're gonna touch a little bit on the vision and mission to share where we are at this point, and then we're gonna dive deeply into the core values. The core values serve as our bedrock of what we do. It develops a common language for everyone who is a part of this process, which is every student, teacher, parent, and everyone within the educational system. So we're gonna, we need your help in narrowing some options, and then getting to some options for values. We need your help in developing some outcome statements and some actions that go with that. We'll share those pieces as we go along, and then again, just appreciate you being here. So this is your team. We shared this with you before. So me, Reggie, and then back at the office, we have Megan and Tiffany. Megan and Tiffany keep us straight. They make sure we haven't overbooked our calendars, which happens sometimes, and they take notes for us. And so today, we're note takers, which is, you know, I'm like, we gotta be on it today. So, and we are. But we're tickled to be your team and work through this. And then as you, as we have shared before too, we are in constant contact with Ms. Cook and Dr. Evans. We have regular meetings with them in between all of the work that we're doing to make sure that we are progressing and keeping things tight and right as we move forward. Here's where we are with the vision. So the vision is typically a mantra, and then the mission is that daily work, how do we get to that vision? So the vision where we are now is all students prepared for success, bottom line. Everybody's prepared, everyone's moving forward in whatever their success is. And then the mission, to build a world-class education system that equips every student with the knowledge and skills to succeed in college careers and life in Mississippi and the world. That's where we are. Any...
This is you.
Hey, we only have people that agree that quickly often. I'm not used to that. I'm feeling uncomfortable right now.
Well, the sample, it's precise. It says what we wanted to say.
Love it. Now we have to begin work teasing that apart, right? I mean, so here's our, this is our trajectory, this is where we're going. Then we start looking at how we do that. So, living our values. So the values that we're gonna talk about today are what, what characters do we expect in individuals, in students, in teachers, in leaders, and community members with, and you, with everyone as we build toward the system of public education and where we are. So we want these to be values that we live, values that are represented in all of our work, and our aspirations as well, right? So it's where we want to be. This is gonna be the work today. It's gonna be a lot of discussion, a lot of you helping us work together for that.
Alrighty. So today is all about core values. We're glad to be here with you. I almost said good night because it's getting dark outside, but good afternoon to you. Dallas Willer says, "The most important thing about a man is not what he does, it is who he becomes." So that's why we're here today. We know that the Mississippian is gonna do amazing things, but we want to talk about who they will become, right? Those characteristics that they will have as a Mississippian. So, who is the Mississippian? We're here today to work with you to get the core values of the Mississippian. What are the core values necessary for developing the Mississippian? Keeping in mind, as Charlotte said, the core values are the actions that we live by, that we show up, that they're, that's how we show up to do the work that we do every day. So core values are a set of expectations to determine our character as an overall organization. It's what the people, the public will think of the Mississippi Department of Education. It's what they will feel when they come in the door, when they read the newspaper articles, when they see Mississippi Department of Education. It's a set of behaviors to determine this is how we show up to work. This is how we show up for each other, and this is how we show up for the community. Lastly, the core values contribute to an environment of belonging, fairness, and good manners. It helps us create a great place, a great workplace, a place where people stay, a place where people stay forever. You can probably ask yourself, well, why are we developing these core values? It helps us model the important behaviors. We're gonna set clear and explicit expectations of the values that represent each of us, and how we're gonna interact with each other, how each other, and how we serve each other as well. Lastly, the core values, well, not lastly, but also the core values help us provide great customer service to our colleagues, students, parents, and most importantly, to the members of the public. They help us demonstrate the values that will create that great place for students to learn, teachers to teach, employees to work, and for parents to send their students. So...
Hold on, back up on that slide. I wanna share one thing. Go back one slide. So when we were talking about the vision, and there, and I apologize, Reggie, this just popped in my head. This is dangerous when things pop in my head. We talked about, when we were talking through the, what is the vision and mission of the state of Mississippi, and we talked about the people who come and go. And I shared with you guys that my family is a military-connected family. And we are one of those families who came to Mississippi, and we lived for three years. And during those three years, I had one who started in third grade and one who started in sixth grade, and then progressed for the next three years. I will, and I started to, I was sharing earlier, we finished my older daughter's fifth grade in Maryland. And y'all, I thought neither one of us was gonna pass fifth grade that year because it was tough. So when we moved to Mississippi, she was having problems reading, and so I started taking classes at Southern Miss, trying to figure out what I needed to do. My teacher things that I had done for the past eight years wasn't working with my own child. So I went back to school to figure out, how do I fix this with my child? So during those three years, we had, I received my doctorate as I worked through that, and have continued to do some really wonderful things, I think. I'm proud of that. But I also had two children who moved through that system. The best gifted program that my younger daughter has ever been in, and she has been in, we're a military family, so we had lots of opportunities. And then for my older daughter, she really leaned into the arts, performing arts, music, and those are things that have carried her through and moved her forward. So I wanted to lean in just a little bit to say, yes, you do have people who come and go, but the time that we were in Mississippi truly made a huge difference for me and my children. So I thank you for letting me share that little piece and for that experience. So, alright, now we keep going.
How did you carry on? What school?
So we were at Camp Shelby, so we were at Forest, Forest County.
So the, how do we go about developing the core values list? There will be three phases, and we're gonna do the first phase today. But the board, you all will identify a list of core values. Those core values will also be defined and described. Then the next phase, we will take those core values and present them each step to each strategic plan focus group. And each person in those focus groups will have an opportunity to prioritize the list of core values based on their perspective. It'll be the teacher group, the student group, the principal group, superintendent, business council, higher ed, so forth. Then we will analyze all of that data. And then we will, in phase three, we will bring that back to you all for approval of the finalized list to include in the strategic plan. Any questions on those three phases? So again, what are the core values necessary in beginning and in becoming the Mississippian? So to start with phase one, we're going to share, we're gonna share a list of values with you. I want you to read through those values and think, in your initial response, we want you to ponder these questions. Are these words a good representation of core values? What words would you want to add? And then we'll have a little activity. So you'll use a QR code and you'll share, but we want to give you some time to read through those words. And again, you're asking yourself, are these words good representation of core values? What words do we want to add? Maybe as you're reading those words, it'll make you think of other words. Feel free to jot those down on the side. But at the end, we're gonna ask you to share five words that you believe will develop the Mississippian.
And as you read through that list, you may think, I mean, there may be words that pop out to you. Circle everything that pops out to you. We've got some more that we're gonna share as well. And then there may be others that's like, I don't see this, and I think this is really important. So make sure that you note that as well.
So you want us to pick out five right now?
Mm-hmm.
And again...
If we have some on our list that's not on here, write them down too.
That could be your five as well.
Yeah, that can be part of your five.
Yes.
Okay, even though it's not on here.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And y'all, there are all kinds of core value list of words.
I believe that.
There are just lots. And we tried to just pull some that would give you a little bit of variety.
Open a Thesaurus and you could have a field day.
The list on the screen right now, I liked because it was in alphabetical order. That helped me.
Yes.
But I also liked words like belonging, collaboration, you know, I saw some different words there, harmony, you know, some things that speak to me, you know, as a person, and then it's like, you know, as an educator. Some I really like, but it's like, eh, I wouldn't include that. But others, it's like, ooh, that's a good word. So...
Give a thumbs up when you are finished, okay? I wanna make sure.
One that basically says the same thing, so.
Oh, then choose a different one.
I'm looking...
Oh, did, okay.
There's a subtlety, however.
Okay, alright. Will you share?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, what are the two that are closer? It's like, oh...
Flexibility and open-mindedness. But they are similar, but they are different.
Open-minded, how? Open-mindedness, how?
Open-mindedness to new ideas, new approaches to ideas that you don't have to teach the same way, just 'cause you were taught that way or whatever. And kids are all different. So you just kind of open it up and, as long as they learn, doesn't make any difference how they get there.
And flexibility, what are you thinking with that?
Again, it's, that's why, it's very similar to it. The fact that you have the ability to change. Not everybody has that. They're subtle, but they're different. It's more the connotation. It's more the connotation than, yeah.
Flexible is normally you're being acted on, and I think up in minus is normally you're acting and being willing to change directions sometimes if you're willing to do that.
Yes, and a lot of people aren't.
If you will, let's go around, and I want you to just share your five words. You don't have to defend them, you don't have to talk anymore about them, just everybody share your five words, and then we'll talk some about them after that.
Really, Jean?
May 1st.
Mayor, mayor calls you out.
I know, I know, I started, started.
Ladies before gentlemen is how I chose.
I jumped the gate before it was even over cut. Good for you. Because I'm thinking about where I am now. Is that what we're supposed to be doing? And in our, what we were coming from? Compassion, connection, accountability. And these are two words that they go together, cultural awareness.
Okay, next.
Curiosity, initiative, innovation, accountability, and honesty.
Communication, flexibility, open-mindedness, patience, and pride.
Curiosity, initiative, relationship. No, I did not see that. Honesty and collaboration.
I had truth, courage, integrity, honesty, fairness, trust.
What was the last one?
Trust.
Truth, provide a positive legacy, persistent courage and diversity.
Lance, do you get to share with us?
I want to invite you to. Disclosure is that I usually do, I don't usually adhere to the five.
Going to try to speak in Chinese, I didn't want that to happen.
That's pretty good. There's a story.
We already made that mistake today, and I made it, so let's move on.
So, sorry, I had a couple more to five. Productive, trustworthy, and I can combine them. Productive, trustworthy, open-minded, dependable, problem solver, achievement, integrity, and inclusive. I look for problem solvers when I look at one of the lists, but...
After hearing the five from everybody, what are your thoughts?
We're all about in the same boat, but just a different word, meaning kind of the same thing.
While this is based on perspective of what I want a student that graduates from a Mississippi high school to have, that's, that's the lens that I looked at when I came up with those side ones.
I looked at it as sort of a who I want to hire, who I want on my team, or how I wanted to pick a team.
I kind of agreed with Matt on that one. Owner of a corporate.
At the end of the day, it is about getting a job.
Yeah.
Being productive.
I thought of from standpoint of the type of human I want running the state of Mississippi, you know, 20 years from now, that's in my mind, that's, I'll tell you something, I'd be interested in knowing, and I think maybe, like, I think people's definitions of the words may be different. I think that's really important that we, because like, open-mindedness can mean one thing, you know what I mean? You took the educational, right, but teaching a certain way, you know, you know, it could be like different, like what people's interpretation of it.
Accountability could be trust, integrity.
I was looking for owning it.
Yeah.
And that's what I think of an accountability, that you're willing to own it, right, wrong, or indifferent. I think none of these are bad. I mean, they're all things that are desirable qualities in some shape, form, or fashion of circumstance. So it really is hard to pick the five most important, because a lot of them ring pretty true and are, they all are positive.
And by asking you to choose five, we're really thinking we're going to have a pretty good bank. Because you'll have, there was some overlap. I heard some words, you know, that...
These two cheated, I think.
I'm a little worried I might think as much like Ronnie.
It's a...
And I give it worse.
Ronnie, I think that's a compliment.
It's not contagious.
But, but it does go back to the definition too, you know, so the words that we choose and then the definition that we put behind them, that's, those are important things too.
So now we want to give you an opportunity to share those words so we can capture them. But also, if you want to change your word, maybe you heard another word from another colleague, and you're saying to yourself, oh, I like that word a little better than this fifth one that I chose, feel free to change as well. But if you'll take your phones out and capture that QR code.
Let me switch over to...
Is that QR code too small now? Then once you're in, if you would, please add your five selected words.
You're already asking me to do your homework.
This is pop quiz time. Yep.
Shashi, I can't even say it. I'm going to say thank you.
No. Cheers, yeah.
Appreciate it.
I was going to be very impressed if that, you were actually going to...
Sorry, I failed you.
Bust out.
I'm sorry I failed you.
As you're in there, enter only one word on each, each little tab. As you start talking, another one will pop up. Not as you start talking, as you start typing.
Okay.
Another one will pop up.
At the bottom.
Here we go.
Okay, this lead idea is off, probably going to need some...
Pick all the words I heard, do the top three.
You're a good man. Oh, wait a minute. Now, are there spaces only for five words? I think so.
Yeah, they just...
Yeah.
Oh, whatever, okay, one word at a time?
One word at a time.
Yeah. Thank you.
If they wanted to do like six, could they?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So if you have six words or seven words, Dr. Evans.
You hit send before dying.
He never did follow the rules.
Do you get them all?
I tell people in front of you.
Oh, find another word, okay.
Put your next word right there.
Gotcha.
And it'll add a line each time.
I'm just adding words around.
I'm getting here.
I'm strong, yeah.
You love it, it's okay.
Three at your own.
Then you got to convince everybody of the right one.
I got quit.
I'm telling you, adding more words.
See, it should do.
It should catch it and click it when it's yellow.
Take a picture when it's done.
I'll still have it.
She's going to take care of it for me.
Then it's sent.
A phone, this isn't a...
Okay, he wants something new. Not a computer.
Notice those that are in green and getting larger are commonalities amongst the team of communication.
We really like certain words that are ours, can we just keep resending it and make it get there?
Yeah.
Let me cut you off, let me cut you off, let me get it.
I'd be cheating, that's what I've been doing. Being savvy.
I should have asked this from the beginning.
I had a communication...
Lance said he was looking at it from like a student's point of view, what we need out of students. We were looking at it from...
That's totally fair.
Oh, okay.
That's the diversity amongst people.
Your perspective is part of the fun, huh?
Yeah.
Is it true map that sizes frequency?
Yes.
Word map, I like to call it.
Well, that's interesting.
After I get the yellow line, what do I do?
Click it.
There should be like a little...
Oh.
Are you a Mississippi company?
No.
Where are you guys from?
Based in Pepsi-Cola.
Oh, yellow thing?
Yeah, Florida.
You have Mississippi ties. You didn't know, did you? You're the only Mississippi ties, aren't you?
Yeah.
But Reggie comes over and spends some money on casinos and...
I do remember that.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
I do remember that.
I have supported Mississippi through and through.
He feels like he's a taxpayer all the time.
Thank you.
I have fond support, and so I won't complain.
Look at all these words.
So we see communication is the largest. Then we have honesty, curiosity, integrity, courage, truth, accountability. Those are bubbling up as well. Then the number of other words there, and we would definitely capture this. Everybody had an opportunity? Let's have a short discussion about this. What do you all think about communication bubbling to the top and then the others there?
We like to talk. I'm sure we like to listen, we like to talk.
That's part of communication, you got to talk and listen.
But if you can't communicate, you can't share ideas, you can't accept new ideas, whatever, it's...
We'll say as well, we'll get it out, so.
What about the other words? Accountability, innovation, honesty, curiosity?
What was the question about it?
It's your thoughts about those bubbling up.
I think accountability is we want people to be responsible, to be accountable, and that's, you have a lot of that. That's a lot less common these days, it feels like, where people own what they do. So that's why it's important to me.
And that, owning the work, yeah.
Accountability, we want them to be productive members of society.
Okay, I need to be responsible for themselves and not...
responsible for the decisions we make.
Let me write them down. Can you get back to that? Alright, I'm going to capture these words, so communication, accountability...
Honesty. Innovation.
You're going too fast.
Back, Reggie? Courage.
Truth or trust?
Truth.
I need two more words. What else stands out to you guys up there?
I like, personally, I liked pride because I want them to take pride in themselves, their community, their state.
Yeah.
And that way, I'm after that.
Does sense is pride?
Pretty good word, yeah.
I like pride.
Of those words up there compared to the ones that I have, all of mine can overlap into all of those except for work ethic. I think that's a very, very important task to have because I know in my field is very, that is something that's lacking.
Mine too, work ethic.
Work ethic.
So to get to understand, to understand the value of that.
And after what we saw this morning, those kids definitely had work ethic.
Exactly.
And that's where they are where they are today.
And I just, and y'all might see it differently, but other words up there, I don't know where that overlaps into any of those.
I don't think it's part of it, it's not represented.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Is there a different way we could say work ethic? I wrote it down for now, but will wordsmith then kind of look at things, I'm wondering if it's on that other list? Like something that would be...
Commitment speaks a little bit.
Commitment, okay.
To me, it's, there is some of the accountability yourself, because it's not going to be hinted, you got to go do the, I agree that it's lacking.
I see accountability as taking responsibility for the work, but to actually do the work to, to whether you do it, to get to the point where you did it right.
But also the accountability is to be able to earn a living and to be able to self-support it, and so it's, don't be a burden on society, self-sustaining.
Okay.
I do think the word work ethic speaks to the heart though of the Mississippian, because we are a very blue collar in our state. And that's kind of how, you know, the original, that's just my opinion, very, we were formed based on that, in my opinion. And I agree, we have a huge lack of it across, not just our state, but across the world, across the United States today. That's a problem we deal with. I deal with it every day, you know?
Only one wearing a white shirt, anybody else got a blue one?
There we go. What an overcrowd. It's only a white shirt I got.
Alright, so here's our next step.
We can wear more.
Red?
Yeah.
Here's our next step with this.
I'm just thinking to myself, like you're going to major league.
We want, we appreciate you guys helping us get to, like, the words that are important to you. But now here's the next step, just having the words is basically the first step in this process. But now we have to look at what does that mean? So the definition of the words that we have. And we want to start with, and I, as quickly as I could, but we'll pull that slide back up, I jotted them down so that we can dive deeper into this. So what we want to do is, as we, Reggie's going to work his magic and make it all happen. So what we're going to do next is basically look at that example, we want to have the word, and then we want to have a, what does that mean to you? And then what does that look like? So when I think about this, you know, so, for example, the, one of the words was communication. What does it mean to communicate? And then what does it look like when you employ someone, when someone graduates high school, all of those pieces that we talked about? And, and I think of it as, this is true when, like, if my word is communication and it is to share ideas, this is true when people have informed conversations, people write, use, use the written, written communication in appropriate ways, they know how to do that, and those sorts of things. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying? So we're going to take a word, and Reggie's going to get back to that slide in just a second, and then we're going to think about what this word means, and then some examples of what it looks like in daily life, okay? What we want you to do is choose one of those words that you really lean into. One of the big words, communication, accountability, honesty, innovation, curiosity, integrity, courage, truth, pride, work ethic, or commitment. Choose one of those words that's important to you. And then with that, write down, if you'll flip the page, your handout, turn to the second Write that core value on that first line. There's a place right here, if you look at the screen, then that is just a copy of this. So that example is integrity is the word. What does that mean to do the right thing? What does it look like? So choose one of your words, one of the words that, that are here.
Those words.
Those words. Choose one of these words, write it down on the core value line, write down what you think it means, and then what it looks like in daily life. Do two, do two words. Write the word, write what it means, and then what it looks like. And then what it looks like.
You don't think it's...
That's the ghost of M D in the past.
Need a little more time, or?
Yes, it does. That's part of that common language that we begin to develop. And the concepts that we want. The concepts that we want shared and modeled. Alright. I know you're almost finished. Finish, finish writing what you have. Because your words are really important to us here. Okay, for this next part, I'm gonna do a little classroom work. So this is gonna be, this is a cake and strategy that I'm gonna share with you. It's a cooperative learning strategy. And it requires us to talk about the information that we've written. So you've had time to think about the core value word. You had time to put together what you think it means, and then some examples of that. So the next part of what we're gonna do is a communication strategy or an opportunity to share in teams. And the way that we're gonna do this is to use a hand up, pair up, share up strategy. So this is what it looks like. Reggie doesn't know we're gonna do this, this is why I moved over here. So the way that we're gonna do this is the first thing that you have to do is you have to find a partner, right? So I'm gonna raise my hand, and you do this very professionally, right? Raise my hand, that means I'm looking for a partner. So I'm gonna make professional eyes at Reggie. Reggie's gonna raise up his hand, like, oh, oh, there's somebody who needs a partner target. So we're going to pair up, I'm gonna come over, and I'm gonna hi-five him. Hand up, pair up, and then we're gonna share, right? We can be A and B, or I can be peanut butter, he can be jelly, or what else did I say? Burger and fries, or, you know, however you wanna do your partnering up times. But we are going to do hand up, pair up, share up. And then you are going to take, no, you're gonna have to get out of your seats. Then you're gonna have to take the sheet that you have, right? You're gonna find someone that you don't normally talk to. And we're going to invite the executive leadership team to be a part of this. Executive leadership team people, we need you to be a part of this. So you're gonna be a part of the hand up, pair up, share up. And then we want you to share the core value that you have written on your paper. Your outcome statement, this is what you think it means to be true. Behaviors when it is true, behaviors when it is not true. We want examples and not examples, right? What we're doing with this is we're having an opportunity to think through our thoughts. We put some things down on paper. Now we're gonna talk about it and see if maybe we wanna refine our statements a little bit, or if we really like what we said. Alright, so, executive leadership team members, we need you to put down whatever you have and stand up. Cause you're gonna be part of the pair up in just a second. Thank you. Alright, I know y'all didn't know I was part of this today, I'm sorry. Alright, it's gonna be fun. Alright, so then, board members, we need you to stand up. And then your hand goes up, that means I'm looking for somebody. And then take your paper with you, take your paper with you. Find somebody, share your core value, outcome statement. Examples.
For pitching in and we'll ask for your input too as we kind of go along. All right, so now here's what we want to do. We want to take your experience, your conversation, right? And this is, I'm going to take notes on this page. And Reggie's going to back me up because that's what we do. And so based on your conversations, we want you to share the word, your outcome statement, and then behaviors that are true that go along with it. I'm going to try to capture this. And then at the end of our time together, we also want your papers. In case I miss something in this translation, we wanted, we'd like to keep your papers that you guys were writing on your notes so that, so that we can have them and work from this. As Reggie shared earlier, the next phase of this, we're going to cut, we, we have 10 words. We're going to work through the 10 words and you will help us with outcome statements and behaviors. When we have focus groups, we will present the 10 words to each group, to students, to teachers, to principals, to the business team, and that, and so forth. We will ask them to prioritize those words. They will not do the outcome statement and behaviors. We, they will not do that part of it. So your definition is really important here. Okay? And your examples. So as we do this, we appreciate you sharing and refining your thoughts and for sharing. Okay? All right. Let's, since we started here last time, we'll start on this side, Matt. We'll start with you now and then go around the table. Give us one of your words.
Communication.
Okay.
The outcome.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. What in the world? Sorry about that. Ah, sorry about that. Okay.
Effective relating thoughts, ideas, and opinions.
Relating thoughts, ideas. Don't judge my typing. And opinions. All right, behaviors.
Gaining knowledge and understanding of the subject matter. Concisely summarizing the subject matter. Concisely. Understanding the audience.
I think so.
I got plenty to breathe down there.
And then relating subject matter in a manner that the audience understands.
Who else has communication?
Oh, we did.
All right. Anything else you want to add to this or you see in a different way?
Um, I had to have open dialogue and clarity.
As your outcome statement.
Uh, yes.
New behaviors.
Uh, exchange thoughts and ideas for a common outcome.
Exchange thoughts and ideas.
For common.
You do yours.
No, it's the question.
That's good. All right. Sounds awesome. All right.
Accountability.
Now they're coming for you.
I didn't do anything this week besides me they're coming for.
Not Mr. Fixing.
Outcome statement would be productive member of society. Behaviors, work ethic, taking responsibility for your actions, earn living, commit, commitment to community where one resides, solve problems to meet the needs of local Mississippians,
Anyone else have accountability?
I do.
Okay.
The outcome statement, mine was take personal responsibility. Behavior was fulfill obligations.
I got it, but it's similar.
Okay.
You did a very good job. All right, mine was work ethic. And I just said doing what it takes to ensure success is the outcome statement. And then some of the behaviors, committed equality, goal oriented, self motivated, put determination. Of course, I could go on and on and on.
Take this down a little bit. I'm going to make these much smaller so that I can get more in. Okay. What you got?
I'd start with integrity.
Integrity.
Mm-hmm. Being honest with oneself and others. Do what you say and do what you say and say what you do.
Curiosity.
All right.
Seek more. I come to be able to ask and answer the who, what, when, where, and how questions.
Somehow would you say ever?
That's those two.
What did you say at the very beginning of that?
Ask.
Ask.
The who, what, when, where, and how.
Ask and answer. I got it.
Okay. And what? Anyone else have curiosity?
I had curiosity. I said be excited about learning. Um, there's a world beyond you.
It's bigger than our walls.
And behaviors?
I didn't get beyond that. I just.
Okay.
I had also, mine was constant wonderment. Ask questions, get out of your comfort zone for new experiences. Figure out how things work.
That discovery learning is so much fun. Anyone else? Curiosity? Good words. All right, let me add. Reggie. Never mind. Get it. All right. Billie Jean? Oh, you, you shared before. What's another one of your words?
Oh, where everybody took them.
They did?
Yeah.
Good, good. That means we've got some.
You skipped me. As quiet as I am back here.
All right.
I put down truth.
Truth. Let's hear it.
It's the core value. And that one, the outcome statement should be objective reality. And you have to accept what, you know. You have to accept reality if, even if you can't change it. Matt gave a great example. Your budget is a hundred dollars. No matter what you want, you've got to stay within the reality of it is a hundred dollars.
And what's your comment?
Well, that's a good point.
Well, you just went on that first word, right?
That was, yeah. I just, we wanted to hear the first one going around. So next we'll go back to, to others as we go. Anything else you want to add about truth?
I mean, it's simple. It's, it is the reality of it. Objective reality says it is what it is. You can't change it.
And again, our contribution was that's not what I want. I thought truth, I wouldn't think about that. I thought truth, I think what you used is that you're truthful and that what you do is, is, is truth, is your work, you, I mean, your stuff. I didn't think about it as what Mary framed it, but I thought that was a really good framing of it.
And there's no alternative to truth.
We're here to do a solid.
But the other thing that we talked about was like graduation requirements. What are the, what are the requirements set forth for graduation? These are the benchmarks that you need to achieve along the way at different grade levels and that sort of thing. College syllabus. Here's what you need to do in order to, to pass this course. Things, things like that. All right. Another word that's not up here.
Can we add the words are?
Yeah. What else? What else do you have?
I have curiosity.
All right. What do you want to add to curiosity?
So on my outcome statement, I put lifelong learners and problem solvers. And I, um, with some beliefs, took a lesson. Ask questions, innovation, allow for failure, solve problems that we don't even know exist yet. Holly contributed an answer to each of those. Thank you, Holly. What does that say?
Isn't that cheap? We both work with our partners.
Anyway, we're already talking. You just use the resources available.
Increase curiosity with everyone.
I'm curious what you would say here.
To what?
That's some sad curiosity you did.
All right. So we have, we have information for values such as communication, accountability, work ethic, integrity, curiosity, truth. What are some of the ones that we do?
Pride.
Pride.
Courage.
I've got courage.
Let's hear about courage.
Doing not only what's right, but willing to stand up for it.
Okay. And behaviors?
I've got not being afraid to go where others avoid. Going against the grain when necessary.
I think I missed one part, Bill. Not being afraid to go where others avoid.
Going against the grain.
Going against the grain when necessary.
Confidence. Billie Jean added. Anything else or courage?
John?
No.
Look, I know, we just talked about, you put it on the release.
Say it again.
Uh, sustainability. Ownership and sustain, sustainability.
Anything else you want to say about pride?
Depending on who you are, by your actions, towards all the debt.
And know you've done your best, hopefully.
All the debt.
Until you're ready, you can have pride.
I'm going to ease over to behaviors. I know. That's why you didn't. I remember you had some. All right, what are we missing?
Courage. Oh, we have courage. Truth, honesty.
Honesty. What do you want to say about honesty?
See truth.
See truth.
I'm going to put honesty beside truth. Anything else? All right. Is that you, you're 15. What did you guys notice that you want to share with this? Any, any conversations or words? Say it again.
So while you guys were doing your exercises, I was trying to compile thoughts across the words. And the five words that I came up, or categories I came up, actually aligned with the first five listed up here. This, they're sort of a set of cluster of topics around truth, integrity, and honor. There's a set of topics around hard work, perseverance, persistence, and commitment. There's a third cluster on accountability, responsibility, goal oriented, a goal setting. There's another cluster around adaptability, problem solving, innovative, or innovation, and curiosity. I put that under that. There's a fifth one under, I would say, collaboration, communication, teamwork. And then Billie Jean had added six to my list, which is the pride, and the difference in stability. I just saw them sort of clustering around, like five, depending on how six cloud sort of clustered ideas.
AI did that for you?
No.
I asked the same thing.
Hi. Hi, hi. I said, I say hi.
Did I always do that for you?
Well, it's all those patterns of learning, probably, because you're talking about it.
Could you send that text or piece to Jean, please?
Could I?
Yes, will you? Will you do that? So that we, we have it. Appreciate that. All right, what about innovation? Innovation was one of the words that you had, but we have not talked about yet. What would you like to say about innovation?
To me, that's almost a result of curiosity. You got to find a different way to do it, or you, that's how discovery is made. That's how medicine's advanced. That's how the world became industrialized.
So innovations, see curiosity?
Yeah.
It's not letting you talk in here.
I got it. Result of curiosity, discovery is made. Got it. And behaviors?
Yeah. Curious behaviors, what does that look like?
I mean, it's the, the adverbs.
Ask questions.
And I think it's more of a why not, why can't I? You know, when people get given boundaries, and people that push those boundaries, that say something's not possible, that will say, well, why isn't it possible? Why can't I do it? What's stopping, I think, is figuring that's how innovation happens. Somebody said it wasn't possible, and somebody went and proved that it was.
And to me, that kind of goes with courage and, and bravery, right? Someone being confident.
Yeah, innovative people seek, seek ultimate solutions to problems. So like, it's never, like, you, you get into a yes somehow, right?
Man who says it can't be done should never stand in the way of the man who's doing it.
That's, and they'll be around me either. Because I'm not one of those people that likes those type humans, that says it can't be done.
Curiosity really is a lifelong quest for learning.
And some people just are, and some, there's nothing you can do to go do anymore, even extra. And curious people really is what moves stuff forward. I love employees if I'm not curious, because it challenges us to be better.
We are, there is, there's some research out there now that, um, uh, that's being done with very young students. And it's when you get, when you remove the boundaries and you encourage them to take risk, and they're in a very safe environment. There, we're seeing some examples that, that young children will, will step into that. What we have to make sure that we do is we provide that balance between the boundaries and the guidelines that are healthy without stifling creativity.
Like Montessori.
It's, it's challenging.
That's where your guardrails have to be flexing. It can't be stationary about when you start your curiosity phase.
Yep, reading within those fences.
Well, the verb, don't ask why, ask why not.
It's also Phil Schlechtey's design, designing qualities. Having a vibe, we're looking at those consequences and so on.
All right, so here are your, your, your words that we have. Communication, accountability, work ethic, integrity, curiosity, innovation, truth, honesty, courage, and pride. You feel pretty good about those?
I just go to show you that we're all in the boomer generation.
Speak to yourself.
Most, anyway.
Blackberry Jean?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, you nailed it, because I'm thinking as a child, came home from school, and our, my mother pushed all eight of us outside. We were not allowed to come back in until she had supper ready. And now kids, mothers go to the grocery store, and they're all in the buggies with laptops. Even toddlers, they're not laptops, they're little.
But wouldn't it be fascinating to listen to the students we just interviewed answer these questions?
Yep.
Where they would come from?
But that is our target crowd, and we've got to think about that perspective, because that is who we serve, is those kids. And somehow, they've got to be able to relate to that, too, to ultimately buy into their vision.
They're gonna get to do some form of this, too. They're part of, they're a.
They're focused groups, you know?
They might have a whole nother take.
Oh, they will have a different take.
No.
But also, too, our, our teachers now, all right, it's a whole different set of teachers. And our leaders are also moving up. So that's shifted, too. So the entire thing from pre-K to twelve or post-twelve is changing.
Everybody gets a rivet.
Adaptive, there you go. And we will have those focus groups with all of those subgroups. So they will see these words, and they will have their thoughts and give their perspective, you know, give their thoughts from their perspective.
And I'd like to see what their words are.
So you'll do this with teachers as well?
Well, we hadn't planned on doing the entire, the entire activity with them. But we definitely want to give them an opportunity to prioritize the words that you, that we have here. Um, and then just see how they respond to them.
But I do think their definition of those words are not going to be our definition.
My point.
Even when they prioritize it, unless you capture their definition, their prioritization may mean nothing to what we thought it meant.
And we can add that to the survey, so this part will be in a survey that we, we share with them. So that, that could be something, then they'll have the, the follow-up focus group interview, where we'll have an opportunity to then ask them specific questions about that. Like, how would you define that, then?
But they may have a whole set of different priorities. They may find words that are more important to them.
If you gave them a list, they probably would, but I think it's gonna work off, they're gonna give them these words.
Yeah, okay, so this will be the starting place.
How they identify, how they define those things.
And with, I mean, after looking at them, will they have an opportunity to say, pride has no place in that? I mean, are, are you gonna give them an opportunity to extract?
A word.
They will prioritize, so if pride comes out to be on the very lowest, then it won't be words that we bring back to you. We'll bring back the top five of each group to you.
Now, will you present them in this order, or will you present them in alphabetical order?
I think alphabetical. We don't want them to feel like there's any priority being presented, so.
No, I agree with that.
And my brain just likes it when it's alphabetized a little better. All right, what are your thoughts about this? Give us some, give us some feedback on, um, so remember, this is building from the vision, the mission. And this is how we want people to show up every day. This is how we, um, we want students to show up for each other, teachers to show up for students, leaders, community, graduates to walk away and have these characteristics, these values within them. What are your thoughts?
Like I said, that'd be a pretty good human that walked out if they had those qualities.
Yeah.
Pretty employable, pretty helpful in society.
And we, we started, one of the earlier slides, too, was, you know, a man's not who he is, it's who he becomes. And through the educational process that we have here in the state, then we are helping students from, from pre-K become who they're going to be. And so with these values instilled in them, we want them to become solid citizens and, um, and productive individuals. Who will take care of me when I'm old and gray earth, right? And.
Long-term care insurance.
And those, those pieces. So does this, are these qualities, are these core values, um, those characteristics that develop the Mississippian, you want developed through the school system here? That feels pretty good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I want to get your hand down.
Yeah, so we want to, we want to capture those. Just in case. So then, the next steps, I'll, I'll let Reggie get these for us.
I've got the intellectual right still on that piece of paper.
Okay, so then the next step, like we talked about, we needed you guys to help us build this foundation, right? Vision, mission, now what are the words that we're going to, to use, um, as we begin to develop, to develop this? This will then go into the, the focus group survey, the focus group interview that we'll do. And that will take place when everyone comes back. Probably like August, September is when we're looking at, um, really, um, doing those. We're gonna get everything in place in July and August, but we gotta wait for them to get back and get in school, so that we can, um, pull them in for that. Then we'll start having the focus groups. The focus groups will be, first they'll receive the survey with some basic information, then we'll have an interview. And if, I mean, depending on what happens with that interview, we're thinking it will be one interview. If something, if there's a conversation that happens where we feel like, oh, we need to go back one more time, then we'll step back into that. The executive leadership team will be our partners in working with those focus groups to make sure that, um, that we're well connected, um, with the different groups as we move forward. So, and then once that happens, then we'll bring those pieces back to you. Sound okay? Sound like a plan?
Focus groups, who determines who has the majority?
That would be your super.
Yeah, it's just been, so what we've done is taken like the teacher, and we can, anybody, anybody with recommendations, you want to add, that's great. We've used the teacher advi- preliminarily, used the teacher advisory committee, superintendent teacher advisory committee, the administrative advisory principal group, superintendent advisory group. Uh, and then from a legislative standpoint, it will be like House Senate Ed Chair, representative lieutenant governor, you know, the, the major players in that. Business and industry, we're probably gonna pull partner some with MEC to make a decision on who those largest employers, not probably, I plan on partnering with MEC to get that list of largest employers. Uh, what group am I leaving out? Student group, student advisory. I, I think, but you, whoever said that, maybe that was Mary. Every one of those kids would, this morning would have been a great one to add to that conversation. So that group is so big, we're probably, I'm thinking maybe like the previous four, six board. Finalist, yeah, yeah.
Higher ed.
Higher ed, we'll bring them in. Uh, community college, we send the presidents from community college, uh, but they're.
Should, this may be crazy, should our goal be that we've got, in some of those groups, we represent every county in Mississippi in this discussion? Either business, school, whatever the case may be. So at the end of the day, every county in our state has had some type of input.
At least one of those groups, yeah. All eight counties.
You can't do it in every one of them, but. A delegate somewhere across. For sure getting them to congressional districts, I know that's really broad, but for sure.
I, I would say make sure they all have the opportunity to go up.
Opportunity.
Participate. Send the invitations.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm with you. I hope we do.
Since Mike showed up, that means we must be close to being done, right?
I hate to see this, but team going in.
I was gonna ask you to start from the beginning.
Yes, she is, I'm just gonna run over it.
Let's go back to slide one.
Right after we get done, you can stay and she'll run through it again for you.
We missed you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you missed quality time. You would have thrived.
I hope I got anything from the magnet again, freebie, you, you are making sure to close the good back there, aren't you? Who are you for?
Oh, my goodness.
There you go.
But I wish came in time to make it for dinner.
Yeah.
Say again?
You did, made it in time to join us for dinner. Six o'clock at.
You know what she's saying?
I did.
He does.
Blank.
I understood it. The accent, oh, I got it.
It's a favorite question.
If you like.
He wanted to give it to you in Chinese, he could have turned it to you.
I got embarrassed myself today, I'll just tell you, so guess I've been in front. I was trying to, you know, I, there was, three of our contestants were actually on vacation in China. And I was trying to say thank you in Chinese, and I blew it.
Well, how, how do you know someone in here telling you?
All right, no, this is again.
You did a girl laugh tag.
Yeah.
She gave everything she could, but laughed.
But she never said what you said, so it could have been.
Oh, God, yes.
She took the mama approach of, don't you embarrass us. That indeed makes me regret my play.
Here's what we want to leave you with, as far as core values. So this is the Maya Angelou statement. We want to make sure that every Mississippian who goes through the public school system here feels connected, feels like they belong, and feels powerful, empowered, because of the learning that they have received from, from the school district. So we want to make them feel proud.
All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you for your time.
Board members, thank you very much for your long day, appreciate you very much. We are back here tomorrow morning at.
Mike, don't go, I need you.
Nine o'clock for the budget hearing, and then regular board meeting at ten.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all very much for your time today, appreciate it. Stay up, thank y'all for all you're doing.